Sorry, it's delayed.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
So we have Kate Volpolante is here, Megan Wicks, Kathy Grant, Erica Colara, Valerie Musciano, Sarah and Christopher are absent, and we have Adam Burrows and Amy Sefoletto.
Our mission statement, the Valentine Board Education's mission is to provide our students the skills essential to reach their highest potential in a safe environment for learning as they aspire to become responsible, respectful, and civic-minded members of society. We commit to help educate, challenge, and inspire each child to excel as lifelong learners who adapt constructively in an ever-changing, multicultural, and technological world. At this point, we do not have any citizens' comments, so we will work as best we can. Just a quick update and reviewing the agenda, we look to have a pretty full agenda here, mostly some motions we need to get through on all business. So we'll have a pretty short update from administration and then kind of dig into the budget and so forth and a few policies, but then flip through some motions and hopefully get out of here on time. Or timely. Moving into it for the consent of the leader, we have a motion to approve it as presented.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Janice, question passes. Okay, moving on to administrator reports, this is Sefoletto.
All right, I'm not going to go through my report, but just three highlights. One, we do, we are moving forward with a person with interview for a full-time Spanish. So by the next board meeting, we should have a decision, the person was at stake, and we'll be coming up to teach a lesson right before your vacation before the next, so we should have that kind of hopefully code been buttoned up at our next board meeting if all goes well. So it's a new teacher, is it a new teacher, is a newer teacher? No.
Oh.
No. Probably my age, which it maybe is newer, but. Younger in my, yes, younger than that, yes. So it should be, it should be good, we can talk about that.
The candidate is a candidate, I'm saying that.
Well, any candidate. Included in the packet that you have here is the increasing educator diversity plan, we are required to have that from the state, it has to be in this template form, it had to have certain things included in it. So basically, I had gone to a couple of meetings on how to work with a team to create what this should look like, there were some samples, so really, this is about how you're hiring and who you're hiring and how you're increasing people to come to your hiring event, a lot of HR type of items, so there's just our basic plan there. You know, it's pretty simple, one of the things that, you know, I did since the last meeting for the Spanish position was make a handbook, put it on Facebook, and that's how we got shared, and this person realized that we needed Spanish teachers, so it's just those recruiting type of things. You know, I tried with the other, you know, buffs and stuff, but not yet, I do have a sub nurse coming, so that's great, in case Carrie ever gets sick, I don't know anything's out there, so it works, but you know, we have some, but tho- those types of things is kind of talks about and how you recruited people, you know, diverse amongst your population or the population of Connecticut, and how you work you and retain them as educators or wherever on staff, so that's what that means. That has to be submitted tomorrow, so we want to keep this held.
There's a motion, I think, for that.
There will be a motion.
Not tonight, okay, sorry.
Um, one of the last pieces that we, that I did talk about, did you make copies of this right now?
What is it?
The thing that I have sent up to you, this.
I think it was in the packet, is it about the increased age child?
No, it's about the Eureka Math.
No, I didn't see.
They don't, they don't make copies again.
Okay.
Um, so one of the things that we've been doing, I mean, as you know, for like almost two years now, three years, we've been talking about math and how we're, we're really need to move it up the air after, and it's probably been about one year or so, we've been using the same program, et cetera. So we actually went through and narrowed down to two different programs. One of them was Eureka Square, and one of them, yep.
On the diversity plan, because of timelines, another thing, the board needs to make a motion to submit the increasing educator diversity plan as presented, and then Amy can, you know, submit that, and will also include a note that the board, you know, did approve that. Now, she said, this is a format that they were requiring us to use, and we looked through that, and we did fill in all the blanks, and there is going to, I'm sure the diversity plans will get reviewed at the State Department, and they may send back suggestions, but we submit something now, at least we open up the door for their edit and review, and they will get back to us to let us know if it's in compliance with the state guidelines. So we, I need to document that the board reviewed it and submitted it as, as, as presented, and this is what's happening right now, so we can edit and edit and still submit it, and they would make some changes or suggestions.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it being, you know, the starting process, because you're using a template, and this is what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is.
So then be someone they had.
So we do need a motion.
A motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Janice, question passes.
Yeah, thank you, and now one to the.
Now it's math, so revert back to math, so we looked at Eureka Two, and we also looked at Intermath. We went to Stonington, I had my early level, most of them go to Stonington, and they invited us over, we got to see math lessons in Eureka Two, we had done some pilot lessons within our own classrooms, this is the one that we've been talking about a lot, so we did pilot lessons, we reviewed the curriculum, we worked with Stonington, this is what they use, so we are proposing that if able to revamp the KDA five math with Eureka Two, and six through eight would continue to stay with what Valencourt uses, and the upper grades, the algebra, the. I think I'm looking at DAB, but I don't know.
Yeah. Usually it is.
Wrong. Um, so what I'll do is, this I left in the boardroom, feel free to look at it, you know, whenever I can pass it around, Stonington was great, like I said, they invited us over, they provided a pacing guide, they provided things that their teacher liked, it was like the platform, we worked with the rep, so we've done a lot with the programs, really think, you know, are we going to like this?
Twenty years is a long time to be.
It's been a long time.
Like, comfortable with one way to do math, read math or teach math.
And so one of the reasons is because that book that we use and that firm is slowly going out of print, so like, it's old enough where we're like, of course, we're gonna have to, at some point, we, we have to take reading all the time, and we've been lucky to get grant money, and it doesn't happen, they don't give grants as much from, I don't know why, but so, so reading is just. But I do have these, I figured Val would probably want to look at it, and anybody else, welcome to look at it, these are the kits that came down, you know, for each grade level. So that's just something that, you know, in the future, this is the program we're proposing, for whom can need to make a purchase.
And you said there was another one that.
We also looked at Intermath, so we have Inte Reading.
Okay.
So they were trying to get us to buy that, but it just was, we're trying to get away from, you know, these are, Eureka is a very simple program, so like, and Val will probably get this, so like, it's very simple, right, not a lot of words, it's not cumbersome, a lot of drawings, pictures, you've seen some of your kids reading books from home, right, so like, that's kind of what the math book is, so we're trying to go away from that, you know, overstimulating, you know, items on a page, this one, people really seem to like much more than the Intermath. But of course, you want, the woman model, the body, we're happy every day, well, I'm like, we want to find it, so, um, this is one of the reasons why we went, they really prefer it, especially to the younger kids, because sometimes it's too much, it just, it just seems to be lacking money. So, but feel free, you know, during the meeting, after meeting, whatever, to look at it.
With, with the process, the math committee has done such a wonderful job reviewing that, and they visited this, they reviewed another programs, but I'm looking at reviewing the materials, and if the board makes a decision on April fourth, I may have money in the budget to make the purchase before the end of the year out of this year's budget, if this balance is available. And if we do that, the materials come in, and then as we go through our professional development, it enhances that because they're not showing up at school and getting all the material the first day, they, they have that in advance, and Amy and the committee and everybody on that has done a fantastic job reviewing and updating, you know, the math.
And so I guess the last piece is, it is Board Appreciation Month, so thank you to all of our board members, really for supporting the education of Allentown, it's, you know, a pleasure to work with all of you, and all of you have children that have come through this school, continue this school, and it's really just, you know, you're so supportive and all the things that get done, and including Adam, you know, being supportive of the things, initiatives that should be gratefully done at school, so we, you know, thank you for, you know, all of your working effort that you put in in timeless nights on Thursdays, and be part of it.
Thank you, it's my homework compared to what you've been trying to forgive me, but thank you for, for the gesture, because it's very thoughtful.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, or if there's anything else to discuss.
Well, thank you very much, and I do. Great afternoon, lots going on, I, we, kudos to all the things going on every single week that, you know, we should dress up.
Bye tomorrow.
Just dress up, and then maybe dress up two days later, go ahead.
I said, why did I put this whole spirit lunch thing together, I don't know, because we had that spirit date every day, literally from February.
When's the play again?
It's this play.
April fourth.
April.
And the Boots and Bling is tomorrow night, if anybody didn't sign up, just.
What?
John, the Boots and Bling dance.
Oh, that is a family name, I like that, I saw that.
That's because all these little girls like to wear little cowgirl boots, aggressive, so, you know.
How cute.
I thought it was either or, like, you could like be a total diva or be like, you know, like completely Western.
It can be, okay.
Or a little people.
Or a little. Or the bigger jeans.
Close to fifty, so at least. Thank you, because it's after hours on a lot of fronts from all the support that just got.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lloyd is not here today, his report is there, you can read that at your leisure, but when we get into the budget discussion, I'm going to be talking much more about special ed, so that's, that's Lloyd's report. And then, unless there's any questions.
We'll save it for the, the budget report, thank you.
My, my report, we've got the calendar of events, district enrollment, that we, we returned ninety thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty cents to the town. I just gave you a summary of Education Committee hearing bills as of March sixth, read it if you'd like, it just gives you an example of sometimes the confusing legislation that can be proposed, and this is just one of the things that we, you know, go through, but there's groups of KCAPs, the Principals Association, that offer suggestions, there's the K policy highlights for February twenty-eighth in the packet, and we're currently down to two bus drivers because of recent resignations, and I, I had to implement a temporary solution by having the Preston Bus Coordinator help us out in emergency situations, and Brendan Merrill is his name, he's come over a couple of times to drive buses, he actually lives in town, and, and he knows, you know, the groups here in town, and then we have TLC, which has one student going to it, and we're shorthanded, and we have to send a van and a driver up there, so we implemented a shared arrangement for a parent to drive the student back and forth, and we would reimburse the parents for the mileage because it saves us the salary of the bus driver and the use of a vehicle, and we were having difficulty making those ends meet, so that had some positive effects to help us during that time.
I have a question, did you reach out to, I don't know, the lawyer they spread?
Dan.
Dan, regarding the liability with that and getting some sort of.
I can, no, we've done this in the past, but I'll, I'll check with Dan again.
Try to do that before we.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I do think we're going to be okay with the, with the arrangements that we had, but I.
Liability.
Yes, from the liability standard, yes, and I, I will talk a little bit more about liability later on in the.
Yeah, it used to be obtained a copy of their, their car insurance, like, there are things that Dan might, I'd like to get some input from him.
Sure, okay. We will make sure that's done, and then, as you know, it's been successful, we've implemented a shared staff arrangement utilizing a federal grant to pay one day a week for social worker, and that is working out quite well, now, I have, I have to stop here, and I, I needed to give you a building committee update because there's some, there's some things that are happening, you know, with that meeting, please, for Kate, Kate is fully aware of this, but within the building committee, the building committee is meeting in a special meeting this Tuesday, we already met on March fifth, and it talks about the, you know, the process with the gym HVAC system, we followed all of the RFP processes for the procurement policy of the town, we went through the bid process, and we only got one bid, and we are running out of time on this because we have to pay for this with federal funds, partially pay for federal funds, so the building committee, and I have this expenditure funds verified, you know, by the, by the Board of Education to make sure that we're following through with documenting the expenditures of dollars, but the quote for the HVAC system came in at a hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars, and DEF was the contractor that proposed this, they feel that they could do this in three weeks this summer, and so the, the, the building committee made a motion, vote on Wesa to request the Board of Ed approve DEF with a quote of a hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars to be the contractor to complete the gym HVAC project pending approval of all references and the additional bid requirement answered by DEF, which is happening this, this Tuesday, but, you know, I would, I would like the Board of Ed to verify that, you know, the building committee has awarded DEF the contract, so if the board makes a motion, it's also reported here, and then there's another motion that talks about the S R three funds, and this is an interesting process because I, I need the board, and we've been documenting the expenditures of funds by, you know, using federal funds, and we have a remaining balance of somewhere around a hundred thousand, but I'd like to have the board, you know, make a motion to use, to use an estimated ninety-five thousand two seventy-two of the S R, you know, federal grant to help pay for the cost of the gym HVAC system, so it doesn't pay for the whole thing, and then I'm pushing the envelope, but we, the town has told us that they want to make available the hundred and seventy thousand dollars from, you know, the recent vote by the town to support the HVAC grants, the competitive HVAC grant that we didn't get, so therefore, I wanted a third motion that, to request the Board of Education to allow the use of approximately ninety-five thousand five twenty-nine from the remaining balance of the hundred and seventy approved by the town for the competitive HVAC application that was not received to complete the HVAC work, so that was, that was one of the, that was one of the motions.
Oh, we're motioning enough to pay for the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, with between the grant and HVAC funds, we don't have to touch the school budget, and I'm going to talk about fund savings and other things when we go over, you know, the, the capital improvement plan, but, you know, it's, it's just an interesting process that we have here, and then there's a fourth motion related to this sequence. Because.
What we need to make.
There was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that was, you know, allocated, and if we use the approximately ninety-five thousand, that leaves seventy-three thousand four seventy-one still available from the hundred and seventy, and what we'd like to do is to go ahead and have, have the board request the town make this available for, for, following the town's RFP process to secure quotes for HVAC work in this central office, which is estimated at twenty-six thousand eight hundred, the two kindergarten classes, which is estimated at fifteen thousand seven twenty-five, and the special ed offices, which is related to the twelve, is twelve thousand seven twenty-five, and then we would have the, you know, the remaining money that's there for possible, that leaves eighteen thousand to work with reimbursement for the, you know, for the central office, so that was.
For air conditioners in those spaces now, are there window units?
Yes, in the, in the classrooms, yes, Lloyd's is, is window?
Yeah, it's a window unit.
This one is, I don't think window, this is just ancient.
This is burning as well.
But, yeah, so that, we did the RP already for the gym, so that's already been.
Yeah, that was, I just, I'm curious, because, you know, we've heard a lot about like, the electrical panel and the generator, are those higher priority, if we have something that's currently working, I know it all has to get done eventually, but.
Yeah, the generator, we're talking with Brian about it, it's, it's still, it's still working, but it's on, you know, it's definitely on the list for the building committee.
I'm just curious if we want to maybe look at one of those as opposed to the HVAC and those other areas, if we have something that's working.
The, the HVAC money that the town approved for the one seventy, we were told, if you're using that for HVAC, it's available.
Okay, so they're.
So we're limited to the HVAC, and if we do these projects, it finishes things off, so we don't have some of the window units and other things, you know, you know, working, working with that, and the two kindergarten classrooms, yes, the window units are working okay, but we had to replace one, they're not as efficient as the, you know, the mini splits, and, you know, it, it, it makes those funds available for us, I want to talk about the generator and some of the other projects a little bit later, okay?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the fifty-five thousand two fifty, that says it's coming from town oil tank reimbursement, which is pretty close in price to the fire alarm panel, so if that's coming from, from an oil tank reimbursement, not from HVAC, could that be re-prioritized?
Yeah.
It's the fire panel first.
I always know with the panel, that was just a recommendation, not even a need, the fire panel, it was a recommendation, not a need, the HVAC is a need.
Well, the HVAC is not a need if you have something that's currently working when a generator is on its last leg, right, so it's a little bit, this is the prioritization, and I get you're saying it's an HVAC, but that doesn't mean we can't go back to Tracy and say, we need the generator more.
Generators, we would like try and do the town at that pay point, like.
I agree, I, I'm just saying, is that, you know, if we obviously don't have unlimited amounts of money, right, so if we have something that's currently working, are there other, you know, like I said, the electrical, the generator, the fire, like, if these things, I think the fire went, I don't think that was a recommendation, I thought Joey said that we needed, like, in the next fairly near future, that needed to be.
HVAC, yeah.
Yeah, the firestorm is, is, we're going to talk about that.
Yeah.
Would you just say there's more inside the company, I think, yeah, I mean, can we make these motions until we discuss those other things then?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, the.
I mean, I think I'm fine with the motion that's coming from, it has the three funds, like, that's the gymnasium.
Yeah, the, if you're looking at the projected capital improvement, it says oil tank reimbursement, but it's not that, it's the HVAC funds, so that's just the.
That's pretty good for determination, right?
Yes, that's true, no, that will, they said that the town approved this for HVAC, we put in an HVAC grant of a hundred and seventy thousand, and we made the application, and it's a competitive grant, and they gave it to school districts that they considered had a greater need, so then, as we were looking, I certainly would have liked to go ahead and use those funds for the generator and the fire panel, but we need to look at other resources, and as we get into the budget discussion, we can look at some potential funding for those types of activities, but right now, I'm having a building committee meeting. But right now I'm having a, a building committee meeting on Tuesday and quite frankly, I would like to start the R F P process. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that they would be full agreement to take HVAC funds that were approved by the town. So, you know, so that's where we are with that, uh, you know, end of discussion. And I mean, you know, we, we have some things, but, uh, the, the big thing is that I'm meeting on, on Tuesday with D E F. Uh, the building committee had several questions, which they're ready to answer. They're answerable questions and, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of detail. But the thing is, I have to encumber the grant money for the, uh, gym HVAC as soon as possible.
Right, nobody's, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about the other
And then, yes, and then we're talking about the, uh, you know, the other, the other components. But, uh, it would be interesting because I'm not sure what would happen as we went through the R F P. We had some original quotes, but if you go through the R F P process, there may be some savings or there could be some, uh, you know, some, uh,
Counters.
Going forward, this won't affect this, but if there's something like this coming along, could you please notify the board and send the paper out so people can read it ahead of time? And we won't second guess you here at me.
Okay, I, yeah, I literally, I literally just had a, uh, you know, a, a, a building committee meeting and then we just get
Well, that's why I, you know, you said, and asked them those, those things for the town.
But, uh, you know, it's, it's an interesting process because we originally scheduled a meeting for April and then we were all set to come through with the, uh, you know, with the process for the HVAC plus the, uh, you know, use of the S R funds plus the HVAC funds. And I said, if I'm going to bring it up to you today to go over this, I might as well review all of the issues. Now, you know, we can delay, there's a building committee meeting on Tuesday. And if you want to leave decisions for April fourth, then we could go ahead and do that and we can, uh, report on what happened at the building committee this, uh, Tuesday. We're blending together.
And I don't think it's even, I mean, I was looking at where it's listed for the projected future capital improvements. It says oil tank reimbursement, which is a typo. If this can only be used for HVAC, then yes, I mean, it's fine. But when it was listed as we had this oil tank reimbursement that we could use for anything, then that's where the question comes, are we prioritizing for the best of all of it?
The, the oil tank replacement funds are being used for the asbestos abatement.
Okay, I was just looking at what you had here.
Yeah, that was a typo one line.
Yeah.
And I probably rushed getting this to the Board of Education.
I was like, it's not H, it's delegated, it was asbestos, I was like, I hope we
But there are some, yes, there, there are some motions to, uh, you know, uh, look at, uh, some of the things that are happening with the asbestos abatement. But, um, the, those funds are already, you know, allocated to that. And we have some bids coming in either for this Tuesday's meeting or the April meetings. But we received a bid for the asbestos removal and we're, we're a quote and we're checking on the carpeting and we also have to pay for mist of air quality. And, uh, quite frankly, um, you know, we had a remaining balance in the, uh, and that's on the other page with the, uh, you know, with the, uh, uh, asbestos abatement, uh, that's on page two. And I didn't have it in a chart, but it indicates we had a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We spent, uh, thirty nine thousand last summer. So that means we have seventy three thousand remaining. And we got a quote for the abatement of twenty four thousand eight eight zero for four classrooms. And the remaining balance is for carpeting, for, uh, air quality assessment. And we are in the process of securing prices for that. But that money is allocated, the whole hundred and twelve thousand for asbestos abatement. And that was returned and I apologize for writing the wrong thing at the last moment, uh, for the oil tank reimbursement, it, for the seventh, for the other, for, for the other line.
Can we make a motion for, um, use of S R three funds for the HVAC?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll start with the
I know she needs like, have a lot of motions to get through this.
Yeah, I'll give, just thank you for sending. Um, so our first motion is to approve D E F with a quote of, um, a hundred ninety one thousand eight hundred to be approximately, to be contractor to complete the gym HVAC project pending all approval of references and additional bid requirements answered by D E F.
Motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nanmas motion carries. And we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve their use of ninety five, approximately ninety five thousand two hundred and seventy two dollars from the S R three federal grant to help pay for the cost of, the remaining cost of the gym HVAC project to be completed by D E F. Um, and comply with all state and federal duties pending all approval of references and additional bid requirements.
Motion. Action.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Hard. Motion carries. And then our third one that we were discussing is
So I'm correcting that, the town to a hundred and seventy for use on the HVAC. And that ball could be used for, that's what the town means.
No, I, I did not get a town meeting confirmation. This is what we were told by Tracy and Julie. But if we put the request in, they could turn around and say, we want you to go to a town meeting to make sure they know what you're doing.
We put in a request for what?
For the HVAC, for the HVAC or, I said, like, this is what was given to you.
Seventy, but based on what Tracy and what Julie said, this hundred and seventy thousand was approved for HVAC, so we want you to go ahead and use that. Yes, it was approved last year when we put in the application and we didn't. And over the last year, I've been asking, can I use the money? Can I use the money? And being a broken record, then they said yes. There were some people that said they didn't think so. And then when we said it's only going to be used for HVAC, that was the deciding factor, they said, okay, it was approved for HVAC and go ahead. Now, I will tell you, there could be another grant that comes out and the grant might say, we will reimburse you for HVAC updates that occurred between two thousand twenty and now. And if we apply for that, perhaps the town might get some reimbursement. But we're following a pattern that, that targets air quality, help from loss of learning time, this is where these grants came from. And then we might be able to access some reimbursement for the town. And then we can ask for help for some of the other projects. But it's a, it's just a, a very, very interesting, uh, you know, cycle.
It's a timely thing, just in the sense that, what the post S R, you know, post COVID S R grants. Almost every school district needed some sort of air quality upgrade, the H, you know, the, the air conditioning and heating.
Okay, and I'm going to give you the sidebar right now. In S R three grants, the state brought in nine hundred and ninety six million dollars for the, for the state to address air quality, learning loss and other things. The current balance that must be expended by September thirtieth, the state has four hundred and twenty seven million dollars is not encumbered. By the decision you made today, our little three hundred and six thousand dollar S R grant is now fully expended. So we made it, we did it. Uh, but, uh, you know, I don't know what's going to happen with some of that money, but I'm in hopes that they might open up other grant opportunities and we can take, take, you know, yeah, so
Well, we did a five for one and we got denied, so that was, you know, five weren't few that we do get denied, I mean, it's a whole
I'm comfortable with the chairman and the selectmen.
No.
Is the, uh, using the remaining funds for the, uh, um, to complete the gym HVAC work, okay?
You can do the third one on that page, third and fourth one on that page.
So we're going to use all of our remaining S R balance, that's what the second motion was for. The third motion is to request that we allow the building committee to use the remainder of the one seventy for the, the balance of the one seventy to, you know, finish the work of the HVAC project. So not the non-S R funds.
That's a nine six thousand five hundred, come on, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we sent the motion.
Yeah, that's To know which one we're
This, this, this central office, the HVAC system must be fixed.
Yeah, but we're, we're on the ninety six, we're still back on the
Yeah, we're, we're on the remainder of the gym.
Okay, yeah.
No, back then, the committee, number three, number
Number three.
We're motioning the, uh, to once use the remainder.
Yeah.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Nanmas motion carries.
And then we're completely done with the HVAC.
It's a gym.
Yeah.
The gym.
If you want to delay the, you know, uh, the decision on the meeting.
You guys, she just did, we both.
No.
No, this, this is what, whatever, remaining balance. Balance found to use for other HVAC uses. Right, because such as kindergarten classroom.
Three thousand.
Seven three thousand with the special education office.
Well, it tells you you're going to put the library, special, etc., okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the student, too, this is also, okay.
Motion. Action.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to, same, you do.
Gotcha.
Okay, same.
But, yeah.
Thank you, then I'm going to give this to Tracy and she can look at it and she can make a confirmation if she wants to bring it to the Board of Selectmen to verify what the Board of Education has done. Uh, then we can go ahead and do that and it shows accountability for, you know, the things that are being spent. Okay, and then the next item is just the asbestos abatement. I have no motions that I would request to consider that because the committee is meeting this Tuesday and we might not have something until the April Board of Ed meeting so that you can verify. But the money that we're using for that was set aside for the asbestos abatement.
Yeah.
And that's what the town approved it for. Now, just as a, a quick rundown, the fire replacement panel, operating budget if, if possible. If there's any carryover funds, I would try to do that. I'm not, I'm not adverse to asking the town for a special allocation for the fire panel. Uh, we, the gym sliding door is going to take a little bit of a long-term thing. The HVAC for the, uh, gymnasium, we took care of, the library, security for all entrances. I believe we're just wrapping up some S R two funds for that. Electrical panel upgrade, uh, perhaps from the operating budget. The central office repairs, operating budget or other, but the HVAC in the central office, you've already made a decision on and that's the most critical thing. Replace a thirty two-year-old generator. Brian and I met this morning, he's reviewing, uh, different prices. And I'm going to put that in the category of the fire alarm panel and the old, uh, replacing the old generator. The service company that was in for emergency repairs recently said it's you and one other school district that has a generator that that's old, that's, that's that old. And we want one outside placed on the ground and this is part of an emergency evacuation. Now, even today, Amy was searching and she found some school security, you know, possible grants. Well, we didn't get the grant that we submitted for upgrading the vestibule and, uh, putting in bullets, but all of the philosophy and other things we wrote, so we might submit that to another grant. And then the, uh, stage curtain is just something that we're looking at. But the fire alarm panel and the generator are part of, uh, a process and I do not have money in the budget for that and it would be very, very difficult to put it in the budget. But remember, we're returning ninety one thousand to the town and there's some other things.
Always the town's emergency.
That's, that's a big, yes, Kathy, you're, you're right on. So you can see, you know, and, and, you know, and I, I will tell you, the, the, the building committee for small projects is a roller coaster ride. I mean, there, there's, because there's, there's so many different variables. And should maybe we just go and apply for, uh, you know, a, 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 a building project? Well, then you, you open up all sorts of other things that need to be placed in compliance. And that's something, uh, that we, you know, definitely have to, you know, keep in the back of our minds. But the, the generator just broke?
Yeah.
And the, uh, and the, uh, fire alarm replacement, Jody said that needs to be done.
Just came up like three, four months ago, but it's still
When you're here, we need a place where people can go if there's no heat. It, it's imperative because we have elderly people. I don't want to be in my house, person, the no heat engine fireplace. And if it really comes to that in the winter, we have a bad, something like nineteen seventy eight, where power is out places for weeks, ten days. We need to have a generator here for our people to come here.
At this point, it's not even snow, it's a, it's a, you know, hurricane force landstorm every other week.
And I wish it could be more of a straight line, but I have been sending you building committee minutes and other things. And, uh, you know, we, we thought we would go until April, but based on what was happening, we have a meeting on Tuesday. And if I'm going back to them, this is a special meeting. I can indicate, you know, where the board is with supporting projects. And you just knocked off several projects by the, by the decision you made now. And that gets us closer to taking care of some of those other priorities.
But I, as we said, I definitely bring a fire panel and a generator at every meeting. It's more, you know, we have these funds in hand and we have to process them first and then we've got a, but it's also like, if there's going to be emergency funding somewhere when the thing goes and it's going to be essential, we have to need a fire panel, you know, I mean, that's why I always ask Ryan, like, how close are we to being in a situation here? He doesn't feel like it's, you know.
But the general merger, it's closer and closer. Four years old.
And he's, he's getting, he's having discussions about replacements and what that looks like and getting our process going on it, so, um, I feel very confident in his ability to just, you know, keep this moving. It's just at what point, at what emergency level is it at? More to come next week. All right, are we okay to move forward to old business? Okay, budget timeline.
It's been a roller coaster ride, as a matter of fact. Uh, three days ago, I had another superintendent call make any And he said, Adam, how's your budget looking for next year? And I said, biggest budget proposal that I've ever had to ask, ask for. And uh, he said, I, 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 I found that about sixty percent of my income crease. He has a large budget proposal too, was related to special ed. So I have some follow-up meetings with that, but uh, we were about the same. There has been some increases in special ed. And I had a budget proposal ready and then last week, we had a new registration. A twenty-seven thousand dollar tuition for next year. And they're saying this student needs a, a paraprofessional for forty, for forty thou. So that's seventy thousand dollars one week ago that wasn't in this budget proposal. That uh, I had to encumber right now. Uh. Sorry, don't blink, can you see it? But this is a, uh, this proposal is this four point seven six percent increase. For um, you know, uh, three hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred and four dollars. But you have to understand that this is the initial proposal. And we have until April fourth, so the board has to approve a budget to send to town hall. For public dissemination. And the people that come into the April fourth meeting, review this budget. And then they, they look at what's happened. Now, if, and I have, I have set up some possible meetings to, to, to look at potential savings. If I have that, I'm gonna walk into the April fourth meeting with some savings. But I will tell you, right off the bat, look at special ed twelve hundred and looked at three twenty. Special ed twelve hundred, line three twenty. This year, we budgeted sixty-six thousand dollars. And that line item right now is fifty-one thousand in deficit. I have had to move money into that account to cover additional special ed services specifically at the high school. So I told you, it's in deficit of fifty-one thousand. And then if you look at the number for next year, right now, that is at a hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
And exactly what we got right now in special ed.
That's what I, that's what we know about as potential proposals.
Yeah.
Potential, because there hasn't been PPTs and end-of-the-year meetings. To document what's actually going to happen.
Does Lloyd have any, he, he should help, he has the general.
Well, uh, actually, Lloyd and I are meeting with the principal and the director of special ed in another school district. Because there's many questions that I have as far as the approach. If students need services, we've always allowed them to do that. Now, you must know that uh, you know, we have some highly priced special ed outplacements. And uh, one of the students for next year is projected at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And the other one is projected at a hundred and fifty-two, so that's three hundred.
Thousand, and you don't have that in this budget?
Oh yeah, it's in the budget. This is the budget proposal that takes care of faculty and staff and other things. Now, a little later, a little later, we're gonna go over faculty and staff. And just yes, just this morning, I got a letter for a retirement and it's a teacher at the top of the salary. So that means that we could have some savings right there. Because if you have somebody at the top and you advertise, you could hire perhaps a new teacher. So, that's one of the things that we're looking at. And of course, you know, I, I wanna start advertising as soon as possible. So that we, you know, might be able to make the decision for a candidate and get that in the budget. I usually budget master's degree fifth year, but if we can get master's degree first year or, you know, less. Then we even have some more additional savings. So we've had, we'll be having two retirements this year with teachers at the top of the pay scale. And one of those, we've already put the savings in. The other one was just today and I wasn't, I wasn't gonna adjust the budget for that right now. But that could potentially happen between now and April fourth. And we've been through this before, but this is a, this is a, a super roller coaster. It's like the, the thunderbird of roller coasters where, you know, it, it, it just goes up and up and up. And I'm hoping that we can look and see that we have some savings. Okay.
Do you think that we should, that removing the part-time Spanish now that we've been able to secure full-time Spanish?
Well, that's, you know, that was something that the board brought up and, you know, Amy and I were talking about that. You know, and uh, you know, we said that would be a savings of, you know, fourteen or fifteen. So yes, maybe, you know, so, you know. Uh, but the thing is that we included it because the board wanted to explore.
Yeah.
You know, what was happening. But if you say, okay, the Spanish for sixth, seventh and eighth grade is okay, then.
I mean, that's always been.
Yeah, and, and right now, I really do think we need to think about savings because I don't want the budget to go down. And uh, you know, we're gonna do non-renewal of non-tenure teachers in a little while and we haven't had to do that for years.
About two, four, four.
Five.
Five.
Five. And you, you'll see those in a little bit. So, you know, just, just going through the budget of, you know, the uh, you know, you can see the certified salaries. Is up to one point four billion. Well, you know, that includes a Spanish teacher. If, but, you know, we might recognize some savings from the, you know, top step teacher that's retiring. So that, that number may change the next, uh, the next budget. And then I think the, the tuition for the high schools is pretty, uh, pretty standard right now. And then um, you can see, oh, health benefits. The previous budget that I had had the premiums going up ten point seven percent. Well, they just called us, the premiums are gonna go up two percent. That was, that was like an eighty thousand dollar, eighty-five thousand dollar savings. Right off the bat and with the retirements and some of the changes in staff. Our health costs may be. I haven't put those savings in yet, but it might be less than we're spending this year. Depending upon what coverage people ask for.
I do have a question about the special ed tuitions, these big hard ones. Are there alternative places they could go and they're cheaper?
It depends on the PPT, the evaluation and, and, but uh, you know. But, but we are reviewing them and we're reviewing the services such as. If there's two high school students and you're saying they each need a para, well, can't you share services? Rather than hiring two? And, you know, and, and that has to be part of the philosophy. Now, uh, Erin Palanin, the Griswold High School teacher, a principal. She's coming into our May ninth meeting, uh, you know, to make a presentation. And uh, you know, above Griswold and, and some of the things. But Lloyd and I are meeting with her and the director of special ed to talk about consolidation of services. And addressing just the issues that everybody is finding.
Programs at the learning lab, those are extremely expensive and can may be done somewhere else.
And I, I'm not gonna exclude those in a budget proposal. Until I know that there's a plan of action that works. Because we're dedicated to meeting the needs of students and being in compliance with all special ed guidelines. And if that's the case, then, you know, and, and our budget doesn't get approved, then we have to look at other areas to cut that.
Cheaper at a different school, should they be going to that school?
Yeah, but if you look, I mean, I, I, I mean, that, that twelve hundred. Four twenty professional services, uh, you know, three twenty professional services. I mean, sixty-six thousand to a hundred and ninety-two.
Yeah.
I, I've never seen anything like that and you better believe where we're doing that. Most of the other stuff of special ed administration is about the same. Social worker, we're just carrying three thousand. But quite frankly, I might say, well, we didn't, we didn't put in the three thousand. Guidance services, uh, minus point seven, health services, two point eight. Psych services, I might be able to cut back a couple of thousand there. But you can see that uh, we've been having some increases. Two years ago, we were at seventy-two thousand. Speech and language. Um, I, I, this, this went up quite a lot. And I wound up adding some contracted services. We went, we, we went up quite a lot, that account uh, you know, doubled. And uh, we have to see what, what's happening with that. But we've had an increase of uh, you know, students who, who need some speech and language services.
Special ed teachers do you have?
Great, I have, we have four. For a school this size, you have four.
You know, but we, we, this is what happens, we, we wind up meeting the needs of students here. And then they go on to the high school and because of the staff we have and stuff. We wind up saving money because we're avoiding out placements. I think Amy, you brought back somebody this year and you were able to accommodate that because of the staff.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so you know, that's more of a savings. Improvement of instruction, staff training, no increase, library media services. Uh, just a little bit of an increase. Technology, that usually runs close to two hundred and fifty thousand uh, over the years. And uh, that's, that's an amount that seems to keep us, you know, up to date. Board of Education, five point one two percent. Uh, other professional services is up uh, six thousand dollars. That may need to go up a little bit more. Our uh. Our previous attorney was very efficient. Uh, you know, not to say that our current attorney isn't. But it was just something uh, that uh, you know, uh, we, we benefited from. Because uh, Fred moved through things like negotiations very quickly and was very specific. And our negotiating team was, you know. We had teacher negotiations gonna be up. Office superintendent up two point nine four. Uh, please note, my salary went up, but I wound up uh, losing, you know, I transferred money from my health benefits. And my salary is.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't do that for everybody, would we? We do that for teachers if they drop health insurance, we transfer to their salary?
Well, their contract, their, their, better.
That's right.
It's TRP, it's just one.
It's TRP, yeah.
The principal's office.
Is that not part of the contract, is it your contract?
Is TRP.
So what is that?
His contract, not a TRP. Yeah. It's, I mean, by state.
I mean, like, he's, he's got a threshold.
That he.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand, health insurance automatically moves to the salary if you drop health insurance?
You didn't drop health insurance, that's what you said.
No, I, I guess, I cut down on the amount of insurance. But my salary is based on a formula. And, and I can only use it for salary and health benefits. So if I didn't need full family, then I transferred the money that I received for health.
What you're saying, you have a contract, right, that says how much, how much you make per salary and how much you make.
Yes, yes.
So that would lead me to believe there needs to be an amendment to your contract in order to move money from your health insurance here.
Yes, we did that at a meeting.
We did, we have one there.
Yeah. And then uh, principal's office, okay, and then uh, fiscal services, uh, just a small increase. Operation and maintenance, uh, minus point zero four. I'm walking on thin ice with that. That's uh, that's something that we're going to have to see what happens with some of the support for the town and the work of the building committee. But I just want you to know that we just gained access to the hundred and seventy thousand. We gained access to the hundred and twelve thousand. And there could be some other funds out there that we could look at that would help us with uh, the cost of maintenance. Transportation, minus one point two four. Uh, the biggest challenge there is repair to the buses, but we're working on that and we're shorthanded with uh, with bus drivers.
I feel like these two, operations and maintenance and transportation are like, are ticking time bombs of, of areas that our budget's gonna. Balloon because of bus servicing.
We didn't decide what we're doing, that our buses going forward?
Not, not that way.
Oh yes, that's gonna take a little bit of research. And uh, uh, special ed transportation, uh, it's about the same, food services is about the same. Extracurricular, just a little bit of an increase in there. Uh, and uh, then uh, community services, that's our contribution to YSB. And then so that comes out to four point seven six percent, three point three, three five. And uh, you know, we need a motion to the board uh, to, you know, authorize the superintendent to forward. This proposed budget to the town hall for public dissemination and preparation for the April fourth Board of Ed budget hearing.
You send it, but then you send and modify before it actually goes to the vote.
If we get savings, the town has, has always.
Insurance, it's not reflected, right? Or did you already have the, the health insurance?
It's not, no.
Yes, the health insurance is updated.
So this is just going out to look at, this is not the permanent?
Right. This is not the one that will go to the town.
This is the point, because we know the hearing and then the board votes again at the public meeting. And I will tell you this, if we don't have all the research done. We've requested the board to, you know, not have a town meeting in May, but to lay it until June. So the board can have another review of the budget. And quite frankly, if we had to, you know, schedule a town meeting, maybe even later. But the, the Board of Selectmen might say, you know, you're close enough, we can live with that budget increase. And please remember, we had six no increase budgets, the last one was a no property tax increase budget.
How, how many mill, this is, can you tell?
How many what?
Mills? Three hundred and thirty-six, how many, how many mills is that in the taxes?
I'm, I'm not sure, you know. Yeah. But, but please remember, we've already returned ninety-one thousand and there's more money that we know is coming in. So in my opinion, that should be deducted from, you know, the taxpayer base. I, I will tell, as I said, a, a week ago, I was at uh, you know, sixty thousand dollars less on the proposal.
This back of, gives to the town hall.
We have to make a decision based on the budget timeline and the process. And we have to make a decision tonight.
Just a clarifying question, so the health insurance being two percent is in this?
The health insurance, based on current faculty as of today, is in there. But I just received a retirement and that could be husband and wife insurance and it might. It's two percent, that's what it is. Well. There's, there's, there's a little bit of a change in that because that includes the Spanish teacher.
No, we understand, it was by the extra. But this two percent health insurance.
Yeah, overall, overall, with the adjustments in the budget, it came to about three percent. But the thing is that, you know, I may have some changes before then. And to ask me to be absolutely precise at this point, I just got a retirement. If the two percent was in there, I, you know, as I said, the, the difference was like eighty five thousand dollars. You know, so, uh, that was, uh, I will tell you, I was dancing on the ceiling when I heard that. So that's, that's where we are and, uh, it's just a, it's just a very, very.
So do we have a motion, um, to approve at this point in time? The twenty twenty four, twenty five budget proposal of seven million, three hundred, three hundred nine thousand, nine hundred thirty eight dollars. Which represents a four point seven six increase.
Motion. Yeah, second.
All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Unheard, motion passes. Okay.
April one, well, meaning the second week, we'll have a better idea of what we're.
Every, every week that passes by now, we'll, we'll.
Side with your, um, annual PPTs that you have towards the end of the year where you have to make some decisions about the final.
Uh, transition PPTs?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we kind of know now.
Okay.
Like we already, we paid, we started paying in the way in October.
Okay.
Right, like we, if there's something that requires a huge jump, like an alternative for a grand ceremony, we already have that. We've already had the discussions, just need to finalize it.
They're usually done in late April, May.
Yeah.
Pretty much no, looking at the kids.
We look ahead.
Tell them it's going to need an alternative school or. Because sometimes kids don't need it when they're clearly very small, we'll just make, like, but then they go to a thousand kids' school, it's hard.
I know. All right, old business item number two, um, federal and state grants, does there anything new to discuss there?
Yeah.
I think we're okay, the federal and state grants.
Oh, I, we, I informed you about, uh, I'm just gonna put something in about the, you know, the state amount and, and where we are. But, uh, there, there's, we're constantly applying for grants and looking. And, uh, if we get another one, it might help out with, you know, with the security.
There's a math grant out there that we can fly for.
I'm sorry, looking, they're like, you like tinker up.
All right, item number three on old business, the total pay school twenty twenty four, twenty five tuition rate contract. And NFA twenty five.
Motion to move that to executive session.
Okay.
Maybe if you need to go or if you want to stay, it's up to you.
Put you, is there anything else you need to report?
We should move these pretty quickly.
We're good with last year's. I'm sure we can see her, I'm, I'm looking ahead. No, it's not like to Amy.
So, uh, you, you think. Going forward, so, all right, that's.
Yep.
So it said, we need a middle school teacher too, to refill that position. Where, huh, no, no?
Stay for. Thank you, okay. So, and we don't really have an update from that, Tracy.
They came out, right, you said the.
Yeah, they, they did do the, um, evaluation and assessment. So it's in process, it's just slow with just.
I think that she's got a contact person.
Oh, yes, yeah, she's had. They did not give the. We're just prioritized.
Those say six months, I would say six, six, six months.
Maybe we'll put those green signs, like, please move out.
Yeah.
One thirty eight.
Yes. It's a good idea.
The school.
Yeah.
Couple of the median.
Yes, that's a good idea.
You're.
Caught my eye.
Well, I asked Brian, so just going back to the building, man, just talked about pretty much everything related to building safety and, and what, where needed. But I always trust, especially because there's members of the town group present.
Yeah.
That we need that.
And especially that certainly wasn't come straight out of. I know, a lot of the kids like now, they wanna go out and they, you know, they come notes, we're walking the Constitution field, you're not after school. And I mean, they're out, they're, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna be out and they're gonna wanna go play. They wanna go buy water, they wanna go.
But yeah, that's, that's the only update there, that, that it hasn't been, you know, I haven't seen any, uh, new update from last time we, we met, so. Um, but we do. Stay in contact with Tracy on where it stands, miss the state. Item number five, policy four one one, one spot for you, my minority was.
I think this was a good point again, because we were submitting that.
Yeah, we just decided to, maybe you said, do you wanna look at some of these policies now that we have to submit this?
Doesn't matter. But that was really the.
Yeah, and I think, I, it was helpful that, yeah, there wasn't actual plan, because I was kind of just more curious about, well, what's our plan? Yeah, and what's required, yeah, so, thank you for sharing that. Why they lost the circle that way, I got it since. Does anybody have questions on it?
I would, would with it.
Could you just, uh, on the very last paragraph, we got with the beginning of this year commencing July first, twenty twenty, each year after. I mean, just have a say to the board when you like.
Yeah, there's a lot of times Cabe throws that in when, whenever the change started, yep.
On favor? opposed, unheard, motion passes to approve or amended. Okay, uh, new business, policy four one one two, spot five two, criminal history record information. First leaving. Seems very tough to solve.
It's something that we didn't have a policy on that Darlena learned through the state that we should, so that's why we. I think so, yeah, it's one of those, you know. I don't know if it's on their Cabe's required list, I didn't check that specifically. But she had some emails about the state that we should have a policy on the CHRI stuff.
I thought it might have to do something with technology, like why we're required to do it, but.
Very little, and there's some about you can't really use your own system to access the C I J system.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, and maybe we each have a little perspective.
Yeah.
But because there is reference of like media sanitation and disposal, like per pint one information systems. I think, uh, Mr. C needs to make sure this is in line here in review.
I don't believe so, but I can send it to him.
It's, it's just, it's seen very like either regulatory, you know, like in unscope or it just, you know, mandated. But I think it's fair to have, it, I, I would rather him apply on that first.
That's the thing.
Yeah, okay, so item number two, personnel. Uh, we have a multiple items, we talked about the Spanish language middle school teacher. We would utilize this as.
It, it shouldn't say middle schools, you should say Spanish language, it's going to be a middle school teacher, yeah, there's no secondary position. No, it would be one full time.
And, uh, it would service the, the grade six, three or five.
We don't have that motion again.
Now, we're gonna need another middle school teacher for competitive. Um, yes, once you accept that recommendation, um, people based, based on movement.
Yeah.
It might not be a middle school teacher, it might be a lower school teacher.
Oh, all right, depending on.
Depends on, yes.
Make sure you shuffle.
Correct. And do we authorize for some school positions now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got it, thank you. Shuffle. Long food service one two, can't wait for that one.
Yeah.
No, it's not that long. It's a page.
Okay, so for, for pair educators, we need a motion to approve Carolyn Stans, Nicole Bykala, and Heather Miller as camp Q para educators this summer.
Motion, second.
On favor? Animus, motion passes. Motion to approve Shauna Stefanski as a summer school secretary?
Motion, second.
On the favor? Motion passes. A, a motion to approve Cherry Quintus as the summer school nurse.
Motion, second.
On favor? Passes. Motion to approve Emily Nelson and Sue Deander as summer school special education teachers.
Motion, second.
On favor? Animus, motion passes. Motion to approve Tina Berman as summer school para educator.
Motion, second.
On favor? Animus, motion passes. A motion to approve April Florence as a summer school para educator with special services.
Motion, second.
On favor? Motion passes. Okay, motion to approve Chris, Christopher Patrick, Corinne Crowe, Christine Driscoll, and Utah Bedore as summer custodians.
Motion, second.
On favor?
I think it's part of their regular run.
Oh.
How they do this, I don't think they have. Anderson. I think it's Anderson.
Okay.
It's a DDS camp.
Of E S Y service, is that what you mean?
Yeah, it's, uh, free from the state.
Okay.
So like it's a camp that you have, if you get DDS, you can apply and then your child can go to camp for two weeks. Then they do certain like age groups, at two weeks it's a age group, you have the age groups.
We don't pay.
Yeah, yes, okay.
You know, this, uh, Kim, she's retiring.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the retirement of Kimberly Campada as a very long teacher here at Montrose Elementary School. Now. With regrets, but we approve the retirement. Yeah, happy future for, for Mrs. Campada. Thank you for all your time, but we will certainly do that in a nice letter to. Um, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, unheard, motion passes. Okay, that's it for personnel. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, and number three of new business is healthy food certification authorization for the sale of food and beverage.
Your favorite one.
It's the same one with you every year.
They have wording and we must approve their wording.
Okay, so a motion pursuant to CG as section ten dash two one. That the Voluntar Board of Education votes yes to participate in the healthy food option. And certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in schools under its jurisdiction. And not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times. And from all sources, including but not exclusive, not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias. Culinary programs and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or not, school organizations or groups. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, motion, so motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor? Animus, motion pass. Okay.
Yes.
So there's a secondary motion, correct, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the second motion is for the Voluntar Board of Education vote yes. And will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards. And beverages not listed in the section ten dash two, two one Q of the Connecticut General Statute. Provided that the following conditions are met. Number one, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Number two, the sale is at a location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just one, more than a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, some per game of school plays and just collective debates or events. But soccer practices, play rehearsals and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food beverage sales.
Motion, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you just probably added. Three thousand one hundred dollars to the, uh, reimbursement we get, this ten, ten cents a meal. By having, uh, pass those motions.
Okay, one more related to that is to sign Thomas O'Connor as the H F C district contact for twenty twenty four, twenty five. Motion. You got that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So that is done, item number three. Item number four of the business, teacher evaluation process, gap introduction, summer renewal of non-tenured students.
Seven, six budget, I haven't done non-renewals for years. But, uh, we need to, we need to do this, uh, just to guard ourselves. As far as any potential drastic cuts because. You know, the budget process. And then as time goes on, the Board of Ed rescinds their non-renewal notices. Some of you may have not done this in the past, but, uh, um, we, uh, we reviewed this and we decided that we would. Give notices and you have to do it at the March meeting.
Yeah.
And this is motions for individual people.
Okay. Now this is, this is our one.
I want you to go through them.
Okay. Can we have a few checks, so that we can. Sorry, I haven't, it's kind of on different pages, um. A motion that the Voluntime Board of Education approves pursuant to the Connecticut general statute section ten dash one five one. The non-renewal of the following non-tenure teacher contracts of Alyssa Fisher, Rachel Sahu, Sarah Seifert. Julia Lavin and Esther Yuan.
Motion.
The way the board further moves that the superintendent of school be directed to communicate this action of the board in writing. And that the superintendent of school be authorized to respond on behalf of the Board of Education to any requests for a hearing if required by law. Or for other data which may be forthcoming from the teacher and or his or her representative pursuant to the applicable. Provisions of the Connecticut general statute section ten dash five, one five one. And further move that the superintendent be directed that any response to a request for a hearing. And if a hearing is required by law, indicate that such hearing is to be before the Board of Education.
That's one motion, and then we have to do them individual, very soon.
Motion for that.
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Regret?
Aye.
My motion passes. Um, and then we need.
And then individual, I don't know why, but that's the way we've always done it, for each person.
Alyssa Fisher.
As preschool teacher.
It's a motion thirty-one.
A motion for preschool.
Okay, the motion for Alyssa Fisher.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Root reached.
Motion for Rachel Sahu.
Motion, second.
Any opposed? Heard. Motion passes, Sarah Seifert.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Heard. Motion passes. Julia Lavin.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unheard, motion passes. Esther Yuan.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unheard, motion passes. What do we get from him? We work very hard to get teachers here, yes.
I know.
Just to meet every single one of them. It's just a backwards system, I think, but. Yep, okay. Those are my comments on that, um. Item number five of new business is, uh, the field trip, a happier topic, um, the Southwood Zoo, or the Southwood Trees.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, unheard, unanimous, motion passes to go to the zoo. Okay, item number six, last day of school. Aren't any, um, Friday, the fourteen.
Yeah, the last day of school is currently Monday, June seventeenth. And our students go to school a hundred and eighty-four days. The state requires a hundred and eighty, and we've done this before. Rather than having the students go an additional day, we made the last day of school that Friday. And the teachers come in for professional development. And we also offer professional development for the para professionals on Monday, the seventeenth. If the board does this pending no more cancellations. And I don't know whether we're gonna put that in the motion or not, but, uh, you know, but, uh, this would allow people. To have the last day of school on Friday, the fourteenth.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, motion passes. It's Friday, June fourteenth, get in your calendars.
Oh, so I don't need to do that anymore. I was like, oh, it's the same day I'm meeting.
I don't try to set up doctors, white bands, and all them. Wait, I missed the last day of school?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, um, item number seven is board self-evaluation for twenty-three, twenty-four.
All considered.
Motion to move to executive session.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion passes. Okay, so that completes our.
Are we inviting Adam and Amy, Mark, no?
That was to move that item in.
Yeah.
To go into. Yeah.
Motion to invite Adam to the executive.
And move into it, okay.
And you can wake up Amy and go home.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to, um, invite the superintendent to the executive session?
It's not.
Motion, second.
Do you want to stay in here?
No, I'm not.
Who's second?
Sorry, guys.
Anyone?
Can hopefully be brief.
If you need to take anyone.
But that is a record of motions.